Welcome to Fernley Planning Commission, September 10th, 2025 at 5:00 PM. Hearing devices are available, please see the city clerk if you need them. To avoid meeting disruption, please place cell phones in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. All meetings are recorded. When addressing the Planning Commission, please sign in and state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. Thank you for your understanding. Commissioner Williams, will you please lead us in the pledge?
... to apply to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's take roll call. Commissioner Vanderheiden?
Present.
Commissioner Garvin?
Present.
Commissioner Wagner?
Present.
I am Jenny McCullar. Commissioner Lewis?
Present.
Commissioner Williams?
Present.
And Commissioner Flores?
Present.
And we do have a quorum. This is the portion of the meeting devoted to the public. The public may comment on any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Items not included on the agenda cannot be acted upon other than to place them on a future agenda item. If you wish to comment, you can do so in person at the meeting or use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom, *9 if you're participating via phone. Public comments are limited to three minutes, please avoid repetition. The Chair may, at her discretion, hold comments until the second public forum at the end of the meeting. Public comments are submitted prior to 4:00 PM the day of the meeting, will be provided to the Planning Commission and added to the record, but will not be read during the live meeting. Any public input received after 4:00 PM the day of the meeting will be included in the record but not reached commission members before action is taken. Is there any public input? Do we have anyone on Zoom? Okay. Be it none. Item 1.4. Can I get approval of the agenda? Commissioner Wagner?
I'll move to approve tonight's agenda as presented.
Okay, I have a motion. Can I get a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Can we please vote? Okay, that passes seven to zero. Next item, 1.5, approval of the minutes. Can I get an approval of the minutes? This will be from last meeting. Commissioner Flores?
I move to approve the minutes from the prior meeting of the Planning Commission.
Okay, I have a motion. Can I get a second?
I have a second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Can we please vote? Commissioner Lewis, do you want to vote verbally?
Yes.
For the record, Commissioner Wagner, I was not present at August's meeting, so I abstained.
Okay. Oh, what was that, six to one? Okay, six to zero with one abstention. Item 2.1. Presentation by Chris Molina regarding management of SF6 zoning and its consequences.
Aaron Morrissey, Attorney, is he on Zoom? Perfect.
Hello.
I am going to pull up a PowerPoint slide and share my screen and speak about this issue here. Just give me one second. So, the purpose of this presentation is, and can you guys see the slides?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Was to look at the influx of SF6 zoning in the city of Fernley, to talk about that sort of in the context of, you know, what the city's goals for its housing supply are and talk about some of the issues that may arise because of this and some potential solutions. So, first, we're going to look at some numbers about the existing zoning of the city. I'll talk about some more background on the city's comprehensive plan and, you know, we'll go through some key concepts to help guide the discussion. And then I'll wrap up with some, I guess, proposed tools that the city could look at to potentially address some of the issues that we're going to talk about here. So, this first slide that I have up here is a slide showing the number of properties or parcels in the city of Fernley based on zoning that would permit single-family residential housing. This is just based on the assessor's records. You know, this shows that there's roughly 7,000-ish parcels in the city of Fernley that have zoning for single-family residential. It doesn't necessarily mean that there are 7,000 single-family residential houses in the city. I mean, this could also be a large acreage properties that haven't been subdivided yet, but this gives us kind of a general sense of the number of parcels that are zoned SF6. And so, you can see at the bottom there that there are around 4,800 parcels that have SF6 zoning, and that is about two-thirds of the total number of parcels with single-family residential zoning. And I did not include multi-family residential zoning in this presentation. That's not something that's considered here. And so, we don't, this doesn't present a complete picture of the entire housing supply. This is really just looking at, at single-family residential. This is your zoning map. Not the best quality image, but you get a sense that the SF6 is fairly predominant, especially, you know, kind of in some of the areas closer to City Hall and near the Roundabout and whatnot. And so, you can see, it's not necessarily concentrated all in one place, but there is a lot of it. And, you know, there's a decent transition, you know, from SF6 to SF9 to SF20, which is good, but it's spread out, it's pretty prevalent. So, this is just kind of trying to frame the issues here on what we're actually talking about. Commissioner Wagner had asked, you know, is there anything that we can do to, you know, to increase the diversity of housing supply that's available in the city of Fernley? And so, he pointed me to the 2018 Comprehensive Plan Update, which is a 20-year plan. And, you know, within that plan, there was several foundational principles, including the two that we see under the Community Principles bullet point. And those were provide a better balance of housing types, to encourage multigenerational living, and improve employment and education opportunities, avoid continuing the bedroom community level, which basically means that your policy goal is to have a city that's both a place that people work and live. And so, you know, the questions that I felt raised by Commissioner Wagner's question, you know, task to me was, is the city making progress towards achieving these goals? And I would say regarding employment opportunities, you know, the answer, in my opinion, is yes. There's been a lot of development in the city of Fernley over the past five years. And, you know, excluding residential development, the boosted development activity has been primarily industrial development, and that's good. That provides economic growth. Industrial activities like manufacturing, that allows the city to derive revenue from the sale of goods to places outside the city. So, that means that revenue is coming into the city from outside sources. That's good for economic development. And, you know, if you compare that to retail development, that, you know, retail development doesn't necessarily promote economic growth because money's just changing hands between people that live in the city. But, on the other hand, you know, retail development improves the quality of life for everybody. So, and then residential development, it has to be available to support economic growth. So, I think that the city of Fernley is doing a good job of, you know, making progress towards the goal of improving employment and education opportunities. Regarding the balance of housing types, you know, there's different arguments that can be made on both sides of that. One could argue that the city is making progress towards this goal because the city is transitioning from, you know, being primarily rural in character to being more suburban. You know, the counterargument is that the city's failing to meet this goal because you have roughly two-thirds of your housing supply or zoning for housing is all within the same zoning district classification, SF6. So, there's certainly an argument to be made that the city's not achieving that goal. And so, the question is, you know, is this a problem that the city should be concerned about with so much SF6 zoning? And I think the answer to that is really, it just depends on who you ask. People have different housing needs, they have different housing preferences, and they have different ideas about the type of community that they want to live in. But, the evidence is that there's been an increase in SF6 zoning relative to other housing forms. And, you know, as I said earlier, the SF6 zoning category is about two-thirds of all zoning in the city. Not by acreage necessarily, but just by parcels. So, that brings us to, I think, what the ultimate question here is, you know, how do we balance the community's desire to retain its character while also achieving the goal of providing a more diverse housing supply? So, there's some key concepts that I think whenever you're talking about housing, you have to kind of understand the key concepts. And, you know, one of those concepts is just the concept of a household. And if you ever get into literature about affordable housing, you know, this is a key concept because a household is defined as any combination of people that are living together. And there's a lot of different households out there. You know, one person living by themselves, that's a household. You know, 10 people living in a four-bedroom house, that's a household. You know, a traditional family, mom, kids, and dogs, that's also a household. And so, when we talk about households, we're talking about everybody that lives together in a single housing unit. And so, when you try to evaluate your housing supply, you have to think about, is there sufficient housing for the number of households? And housing supplies just refers to the amount of housing that's available in a given area. And the key thing to really point out with the housing supply is that you do need a certain amount of vacancy to have a healthy housing market. And, you know, the reason why is that people need to be able to move as their needs and their preferences change. So, the vacancy rate is not necessarily a bad thing. It might sound like, oh, you know, a huge vacancy rate is a red flag, obviously. But, a healthy vacancy rate, you know, is key to having a good housing supply. And the reality is, is that the higher vacancy rate that you have, it helps keep housing prices down. And so, if, you know, in basically all jurisdictions throughout the country, the aim has been to increase housing supply, to improve vacancy rates, to improve, you know, mobility and hopefully that leads to greater housing affordability. When we talk about housing shortages, that becomes very complex. And I'm not an economist, I'm just an attorney. I don't study data for a living. And, you know, a housing shortage is very difficult to understand because of the issue of what constitutes a household. And, you know, I gave the example of 10 people living in a four-bedroom house, that's not an ideal living situation for a household. And so, a housing shortage refers to, you know, a gap between the housing stock and the number of housing units that you would need to accommodate the desired number of households, whatever that looks like. And so, you know, this is a really difficult issue to tackle. I'm not here to try to tackle that problem today, and certainly not qualified to do it without the assistance of an economist. But, you know, these are the issues, these are the concepts, these are the themes that should kind of always be in the background when we're talking about making changes to your zoning and development code to either improve or diversify the housing supply. And one thing that I want to refer back to is a 2022 study that the city had performed to, you know, evaluate fiscal challenges. And, you know, the key findings from that is, well, I'll kind of talk about the study a little bit more. One of the things that the study points out is that the city's in a growth phase, and, you know, as developers add new homes and, you know, businesses and build infrastructure, that infrastructure is generally built over a large area and in a relatively short period of time. And this is just natural, right? It's kind of a fact of, in every place, you know, the more development that you have, the more dense everything becomes. But, in that initial phase, when property values are low, developers can build, you know, on large lots and, you know, space them out. And they, you know, and the city of Fernley is in this situation right now, I think, is you're rapidly annexing and expanding the city service area, which is going to require larger infrastructure systems to facilitate the growth, and there's a significant cost that goes along with that. And so, that pattern of development leads to a situation where you have a lot of development that's on infrastructure that becomes very difficult to afford because the city's going to have ongoing maintenance costs over decades and is going to need to expand that infrastructure. And the further away everybody lives and works, it makes it harder to distribute the cost of that infrastructure. So, you know, what are the options if the city finds themselves in that situation? And there's really only three options. You can either increase taxes, which nobody wants to do, you can cut city services, which nobody wants to do, or you can try to find some balance and, you know, for responsible development. And the key things that you want to do there is, you got to prioritize infill development. And if you go back to that zoning map, there's, you know, opportunities to fill in, you know, areas of the town that haven't been developed before you start building out further away from the core of the city. And redevelopment's an option, but the basic idea is that you want to focus on increasing the amount of development that you have in, you know, along the city's existing infrastructure before you start trying to invest in expanding your infrastructure because it just, it becomes too expensive to maintain. So, that was a good study, and I think it's something that, you know, to be cognizant about. But, you know, the bottom line is that when you have development that's adjacent to streets that doesn't generate enough property tax revenue, the difference has to be made up from other funding sources, and there's really just not enough tax revenue to support that. So, this is a challenge, right? You know, where the city finds itself is in a situation where you have, you're transitioning to becoming a larger city. It's inevitable that you're going to need more housing. But, you know, it does, the numbers that I've looked at at least do suggest that this, the housing that's in the pipeline and has been in the pipeline and been developed over the last five years isn't necessarily meeting that goal of offering a more diverse housing supply. And so, and the challenge is, is that if you wanted to diversify the housing supply, you could eliminate the SF6 zoning category, but that's going to lead to lower density development, which is going to increase your infrastructure costs. And so, I think the only way to really kind of balance those two goals is to try to give developers some kind of an incentive so that they can still make their projects pencil, but have the ability to, you know, have an incentive to offer more diverse housing products. So, I've put up a couple of solutions here, and, you know, these are things that we can explore further and dive down into another day. But, you know, the basic idea here is that with the middle, the missing middle overlay is an idea of having even more zoning categories available and allowing some lower density or higher density housing essentially in infill areas. And what you could do here is you can take your zoning map and designate certain areas that you're comfortable with higher density development, or that you would support higher density development, and offer some kind of incentive like reduced setbacks, reduced frontage, cluster subdivisions, you know, things like that, which for a developer that's got to build all the infrastructure and fund it initially, you know, this is an incentive for them to develop property. And the idea here is that if you promote higher density infill development, that's going to add more users to the existing infrastructure without necessarily increasing the cost of additional infrastructure, extending infrastructure. There are certain areas of town where I think that it would be inappropriate to encourage this type of development, but if the city were to identify certain areas that they're comfortable with this development, you know, it could put the city into a better position to, you know, restrict zoning in other areas of the city. And so, that's one tool that could be added to the toolbox. The current development code of the city of Fernley doesn't have any overlay districts that I'm aware of or that I can think of right now. But, it's something that we could look into. And I think that it's, you know, if the goal is to ultimately have more single-family housing that's above the SF6 category, you know, lower density, there's got to be some higher density development that kind of balances that out. It's just not fiscally sustainable to have one without the other. And, you know, another option that we could look into and have a more robust discussion about is these things called density bonuses. And really, this is, there's a lot of flexibility here. This is a tool that the Nevada Revised Statutes, Chapter 278, which governs planning and zoning, expressly recognizes this as a tool in the zoning toolbox. And so, the idea here is that, you know, it kind of goes along with the missing middle overlay is that if developers are permitted to build at a lower density in one place, then they'll be required to develop at a higher density in another place. And there's a number of different ways that you can do this. But, you don't necessarily have to increase the number of homes in a given area. But, you could make the design of homes more flexible by offering things like waivers, reduced street widths, allowing single-loaded streets where you don't have sidewalks on one side. And, you know, if, and those are incentives that would be attractive to developers because it allows them to build at a lower cost. And, you know, reduced setbacks is just one example, reduce, you know, rear yards, things like that. And this really, you know, puts the onus on developers to be creative about what types of things that they could build. You could also offer these incentives on the condition that they provide a range of housing types and sizes in a particular subdivision. So, those are the basic concepts. I'm happy to answer questions, but I think, you know, the purpose of this discussion was to just kind of look at the issue and, you know, provide some high-level suggestions here.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Wagner?
So, first, Ms. Molina, I wanted to thank you for the presentation. I know we've gotten back and forth a couple times. I thought the data you presented there was really good, so greatly appreciate that. And I kind of view today as a start to the discussion, right? We're not going to solve anything today. I'll kind of just go on a little bit of a tangent here. So, a lot of us have been up here since 2017, 2018. When we were passing this Comprehensive Master Plan in 2018, I specifically remember our previous planning director, Commissioner Williams, was with me. We went to Carson City to kind of check out, like, other housing types, multifamily. We were really pushing this mixed-use deal where we thought developments would come in, where maybe there were businesses on the first floor, some housing on the second two floors. Carson City was developing similar products. So, I was all ears on that stuff. We talked a lot about affordability, about supply and demand. If we provided the supply of housing, maybe it would decrease the housing and make it more affordable. If we we provided the supply of housing, maybe it would decrease the housing and make make it more affordable for friendly people. And so those were kind of the base, the basis of why we passed that comprehensive master plan in 2018. And now you fast forward seven years later. We haven't really seen that mixed use too much. We, I I check out the new housing prices and almost everything is $400,000 dollars and above, even for 6,000 square foot lots. And so if the average worker is making 20 to 30 hours, dollars an hour around Fernley and you're trying to promote affordability, to me, $400,000 for a house is is not very affordable at those rates. And then the other part of this is almost every single zoning change we've seen here for the last seven years has been taking larger half, RR half, SF 12. And almost every request is moving it down to SF six or multifamily. So where I'd really like to see more of is the SF nine and SF 12 zoning categories.
Sorry.
Hold please. I have to resuscitate my guy here.
And, you know, we made this argument about property tax revenue being higher with smaller lots, which I understand. But the other side of that argument is the smaller lots, you're going to have more people per area. More services are needed for those people. So really, in the end, it's kind of a wash as far as the extra revenue coming in, being used for extra services, extra schools, all those sorts of things. So in in my eyes, we have a real problem in the farm district area of all of these SF six houses coming in and the transportation infrastructure not being there. We have, you know, almost 1,500 kids in our high school trying to get to the high school in a a small corridor and incredibly dangerous intersection at Cottonwood in 95A that hasn't been solved. So I just, I asked the questions I think were a critical standpoint. I think there's room for bigger, bigger lots. For me, you know, I think every family goes through kind of a a progression as far as housing. You might start in a 6,000 square foot lot. But then most people want to grow into maybe a bigger housing lot. I'm kind of at a point in my life where I wouldn't desire to live in a 6,000 square foot lot anymore. Kind of 10,000 square foot would be the minimum that I'd even look at. So and I'd I'd like to attract some of those people to firmly too. And that's not taking anyone away, anything away from folks who who like 6,000 square foot lots. But again, this diversity idea goes the other way too. We got to develop some larger lots attract some folks who who like those lots into town as well.
Thank you. And, you know, I totally agree with that. And and the other thing, as far as affordability, I agree with that. It seems to me like the SF six, what that encourages are investors who invest and then they you get a rental development. But then the rent isn't affordable either. You've got, you know, a three bedroom, two bath house being rented out for $1,800 a month. And then, or more? Oh, well, so I'm out of the loop. So then that's not really helping our community either. So I I agree, we've got to get a little bit more diverse.
I'll just reiterate from what I said at the last meeting, it just doesn't make sense to put SF six right in the middle of any size rural residential, whether it's a half acre, one acre, five acres, which is where all that property is. I know we're not in that discussion now. But even the master plan states that there needs to be some type of a gradual. If we're going to get put in smaller lots in these areas that are zoned for these mixed housing, single family housing types, then it needs to be gradual and not, you know, in the middle of all these like one acre lots, half acre lots, and now you get all these little tiny six 6,000 square foot lots in the middle. And if my thing is that we have this master plan, what is it good for if we have to keep on doing this, having these conversations about putting these SF sixes in the middle where it doesn't make any sense? I mean, this area that we're going to be talking about later, this would be prime for like another elementary school. So everybody that's in that area can walk to the school. You've got all those homes on immigrant that are on one side. And then all that nice rural residential that's on the other side where people can actually ride their bikes to school if they wanted to. You didn't, you won't even need a bus or something like that. Why can't we figure out something like that? It's that would be ideal, not to put in this little neighborhood where these little tiny lot homes are surrounded by all these bigger homes. On top of which, all the property that's around this area is that they have livestock. They've got chickens, they've got goats, they've got pigs, they've got horses. And people that buy homes on a 6,000 square foot lot don't understand what it is for people that have livestock and have to care for these animals. And they'll have little kids and they'll want to be running and jumping over fences to play with the horse. And it's just, it's dangerous. So there's, there's more than just there's more than just trying to solve this for that. You have to think of the whole big picture and what's around the area before, to make that decision to move forward. And I think that from the last meeting, there was a lot of excellent points that were brought up by the public about potential flooding in the area, in some parts of that area where they've got this flooding ditch that always floods when the rains come in. And the have we solved for that? So there's a lot of things that, you know, open questions.
And Aaron Mortson, city attorney, let's just make sure we stay on topic on this one. And then we reserve any discussion in regards to that that specific item for that item.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the planning commission regarding this? No? Okay, Mr. Molina, thank you so much. We do appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next, item 3.0. Discussion with the planning commission and staff. Public input, additional discussion with planning commission and staff D. What what am I doing? Wait a minute. I am good. Okay. Council action or redirection to staff? All right, for possible action regarding the First Amendment for the Red Hawk Ranch Development Agreement, Bill Number 368, DA 200002-AMD1, submitted by Wood Rogers, Inc., on behalf of Red Hawk Ranch LLC, Series B and DB-BB Investments I LLC, to request the following changes. One, incorporate all property owners and parcels into the agreement. Two, extend the expiration date of all applicable tenant subdivision maps. Three, establish the framework for a future special assessment district. Four, allow an onsite density transfer. And five, relocate the community park. The Red Hawk Ranch Development Agreement, as amended, encompasses four parcels totaling approximately 161.09 acres in area APNs
Good evening, planning commissioners. Elisa Johansson, senior planner for the record. Tonight, I'm here to discuss, as mentioned, DA 20 dash, excuse me, DA 20 002-AMD1. This is the first proposed amendment to this development agreement. I'll first go over some background for the site before moving on to the approval criteria. The site is located south of Main Street, east of Stock Lane, west of Miller Lane, and north of existing Miller Spring subdivision. There is a minor error in my slide. The site comprises 161.09 acres. The site zone is SF six and MDR 14 pursuant to a prior zoning map amendment. The surrounding zoning pattern is quite complicated. There is a range of commercial zoning districts along the north property boundary. To the south, we have some mixed residential zoning districts. To the east, we have some residential zoning districts transitioning to commercial districts closer to 95. And then to the west, we have additional rural residential zoning districts along Stock Lane. Here is the zoning vicinity map. You'll notice that our maps are not updated with the current zoning. I'm not sure why that is, but that's something that we're working to correct. I'm mainly showing this vicinity map to demonstrate the zoning pattern that surrounds the development site, which is that large square in the middle. The amendment scope is something we've already discussed, but to reiterate for the record, the first request involves incorporating all property owners and parcels into the agreement. The tentative subdivision map known as duets at Red Hawk Ranch is now part of the agreement. Extending the expiration date of all tentative subdivision maps is also part of the amendment. The two applicable TSMs are set to expire in 2026. We're proposing to extend those to 2031. And that extension does include the allowable extensions of time, the two year extensions that would be allowable under state law. Excuse me. In June, city council approved Resolution 25-005, establishing special assessment district guidelines. The applicant proposes to utilize those guidelines to establish an SAD for this property and project. That SAD would include onsite backbone infrastructure such as roadways and utilities, offsite roadway and utility improvements and connections, mass grading to accomplish the extensive drainage needs for the site and community park improvements. Additionally, to recapture dwelling units lost to the to that extensive drainage infrastructure, an onsite density transfer is proposed to be authorized. I do want to point out that this does not affect the existing maps, which are at this time proposed to be unchanged. The final component of the amendment's scope is to relocate the community park to the retention basin that is now proposed in the northwest corner of the development. This achieves numerous goals, including efficient use of land resources. It also relocates the community park to a portion of the site that is more visible and accessible, excuse me, to the community at large. Development agreements in our current code have two criterias for approval, two findings. The first is that it must be consistent with the city's master plan. There are a number of master plan policies that are supported by the amendment in that the amendment facilitates the completion of this development. I'll let you read them on your screen. They include providing opportunities for high density residential development near the downtown core, which is where this property is located. It also encourages housing that supports sustainable development patterns by promoting, as I mentioned earlier, the efficient use of land, conservation of natural resources, easy access to services and public facilities, and resource efficient design and construction. The proposed amendment facilitates development that will provide a spectrum of high quality housing to meet the city's need. The development proposal currently involves both single family residences and attached single family residences, so duplexes and traditional standalone SFRs. The amendment also encourages the intensification of land use in the existing community core and sustains the residential character of the Stock Lane area. Although the development site is located outside of the Stock Lane special planning area, it is immediately adjacent to it. And so preserving that area for residential uses likewise sustains the residential character of the Stock Lane area. The second finding is that the proposed development agreement must be consistent with Nevada or federal law. This DA has been thoroughly vetted by both our internal city attorney, Aaron Mortson, outside counsel, Chris Molina, who we just spoke to, and the legal team for the applicant. No apparent legal conflicts or noncompliance issues were noted. We do recommend approval of the amended development agreement. But we would also accept a modification. If you do have a proposed modification, I would ask that you identify the proposed modification and also state your rationale. If you were to recommend denial, again, please state your finding and your supporting analysis and repeat that for each applicable finding that you are not able to make. And that's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, so I do have a quick question regarding the future special assessment district. Can you explain to us a little bit about what that is?
I will do my best. I'm not super familiar with special assessment districts. This is a new process to the city and new to me as a planner. My past work experience has not touched on this funding mechanism. However, as I understand it, the special assessment district process essentially assists developers in relieving some of the upfront cost of infrastructure by allowing for bonding of that infrastructure. So bonds would be issued by the city. As those funds are collected, they would be used to facilitate the infrastructure installation and then added as a special assessment, as the name implies, on future property owner tax bills. So that's a way to recoup those costs without requiring a large cash outlay upfront.
Okay. And are the people who are buying these properties, are they going to be aware that they're in a special assessment district? Thank you.
Yes, as I understand it, the special assessment district is a covenant that runs with the land. It would essentially be tied to the parent parcels and once final mapped, that covenant would be carried over to the resulting lots. So it would be something that would be surfaced through a title search, for example.
Okay. And this are, so my question is, is I know that everything is in the fine print somewhere. But are just like the general people, like if I were to go buy a property, is someone going to explain that to me that, oh, there's going to be a special assessment on your property taxes? I mean, is this going to discourage people from buying in that type of a subdivision? If they know that they're going to have this special assessment on their property taxes? I mean, are they going to be made very aware of that? Is it going to be open and upfront?
That is respectfully beyond the scope of my review. I cannot guarantee or speak to the outreach methodology or the advertising methodology that might be utilized by future developers. But it would be, as I mentioned, recorded on title and something that is fairly plainly obvious to future purchasers.
Madam Chairwoman, Michelle Rambo, planning director for the record. The applicant does have a presentation, so we can ask him that question, them, I assume.
Perfect. That would be.
You can ask them that question.
Great. That would be an answer that I would like, or a question I would like answered. Yes, sir.
Hi, LeRoc Flores here. I, as an example, I know that Texas kind of does this also that they put assessments as they build. They don't have the city pay for everything. They have bonds issued and they assess on the homeowner. And and the and the operating thing is that if you're a short term buyer, where you're not going to live there very long, it works against you because you're paying extra, the extra assessment, and it never goes down. You never pay it off. So it's an extra encumbrance. And so you lose money if you leave. That's the only, I mean, besides the extra cost of the assessment, that is the only drawback. But is that really a drawback that actually makes people stay longer, maybe, you know, retain their house? Think about a little more about just moving away without, you know, like cutting all ties. You've lost a lot of money. You paid it into the community and then you left. So I don't, I don't look at a social assessment as a as a drawback necessarily, just to make the point.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Garvin?
Thank you. I like this. I really do. I think this will be great. The one thing that concerns me is the where it's at in Fernley, which is right there on that, right across from the fund center, okay? Traffic is already kind of gnarly there at certain times of the day. Is the city planning on mitigating any additional traffic? Is the city planning on mitigating any additional traffic lights or anything like that? Like, there's times where if I drop my kids off at the Friendly Fun Center and I'm trying to make that left-hand turn back onto Main Street, I'm sitting there for twenty minutes.
I would have to go back and review the conditions of approval for these tentative subdivision maps to see if there were any stipulations there regarding mitigation measures for traffic considerations. My review here focused primarily on the development agreement scope. And so I apologize, I have not looked back to the tentative subdivision maps to do a full re-review of those actions. If there are stipulations in the conditions of approval that would require mitigation measures related to traffic, then those would certainly be applied. Those would not be negated by this amendment. They would still be required to be met prior to final map.
Madam Chair, Michelle Rambo, for the record again. I can expand on that. The developer does have conditions to improve Main Street along the frontage of their property. So those, and that was required as part of their traffic study when they submitted the maps. So that will be done.
So making like additional turn lanes or potentially two lanes on each side?
I believe there was widening and a left turn lane required. But again, the developer can confirm that when they get up.
Okay. Commissioner Flores?
Yeah, one quick question, one another one. On the bond issue, is, is the structure of the bond going to be presented to the planning commission or only the city council? Are we going to get to see what they're actually going to do on the bond? Or is it blind to, to the planning commission? Do we know this?
That would be a question for Lydia. Lydia, can you help with that?
Lydia Altic, Deputy City Manager. So that whole process does go before the city council. And it's a very lengthy process. The actually, the developer has to come to the city before it ever gets to the council and have a meeting and decide what they're going to do. They run it by the city manager's office. And then council has plenty of opportunities to not only have input, but to stop the special assessment district right up until the point where you do go out for the bonds. So there's probably a year's worth of work that before you even
See it, yeah.
Do the bond process.
Okay. Thank you.
So this is just allowing to set the framework for, okay, all right.
Again, I think that's a great question for the developer when you, when you have a chance to ask him some questions because I'm not sure what that means either.
Continuing on the question. I have a question about the conversion of the retention pond to a, a playfield. Is this retention pond, I couldn't tell from the drawing, i- is it slightly recessed down that the feet, the playing field? Or is it level? Is it just open grass?
That's a question for the developer.
Okay. I would like to know that answer to that. Thank you.
Okay. Why don't we have the presentation from the developer?
Good evening. Derek Kirkland, Wood Rogers, representing the applicant and the developer. They are here tonight. We have Greg Evangelatos and Todd Pardula. I will go ahead and I will try to cover some of your questions, but if I forget, please remind me. So the development agreement, just a little history on kind of the initial approval. So the original development agreement, which came along with match plan amendment zone change, was done back in early twenty twenty-one. And then we came through with a tentative map for Red Hawk Ranch, which is the, the single family there on the, the left. And then on the right, we came back with another tentative map for the duets and end of twenty twenty-two. That was a different developer. And so some of the things that were part of those tentative maps in this development agreement amendment is not going to change anything. Of those tentative maps is already in place. None of those conditions changed. None of the things that were in the original development agreement changed. And some of those things, the big thing on the development agreement, a lot of it was the discussion on buffer zones. A lot of it was discussion about the, the Miller Lane and kind of the larger lots along the, are not Miller Lane, sorry, Stock Lane and larger lots along that, that area. The, the single story is limited to the, the south and the west. And then the Red Hawk, the duets at Red Hawk Ranch were not included in that development agreement. It was a separate property, separate property owner. And I'll get to this in a minute, but that's largely bringing them on and the, and kind of why we're doing the framework for the SAD at this point. Some of the approved tentative map conditions. So another piece to this is, once we got through the tentative map approvals and years of going through the process with this project, we started doing the engineering work and working on the CLOMAR, the conditional letter of map revision with FEMA. And we found that the, basically just the backbone infrastructure. So all the conditions we got to improve Main Street, including the traffic signal at Truckee Lane, Stock Lane, Miller Lane, all, all those improvements, the backbone utilities, we got to bring sewer into the site, the drainage channel to deal with the flood zone, basically all that stuff. Before they can even build the first lot in Red Hawk Ranch is, is over fourteen million dollars in backbone infrastructure in today's cost. So not even including inflation over the next few years while we put all that in place. So with that, the developers started working together, obviously duets at, at Red Hawk and, and Red Hawk Ranch, and trying to figure out how to make this work. And Greg will mention here in a minute, but they had some builders come talk to them, looking at the property and just the, the sheer cost to come out of the ground, as they put it, with the first toilet is incredibly expensive. So we're trying to find ways to make this a viable project. And so that's largely what this, this amendment is about, is to help kind of move this project forward. So with that, as we mentioned, so that we're adding in both property owners into the development agreement. So it's basically a three-party agreement with the city and both developers of this property. So bringing all one hundred and sixty acres together to agree on how we're going to get this done. And then basically as part of that is the framework of the special assessment district. So what we're asking for the framework is, is really, we're not asking you to approve a special assessment district tonight. We're just saying, these are the types of things that both developers are agreeing to with the city of this is, when we come forward per the city's policies that were adopted, we actually spend the money to develop a special assessment district. These are the types of things that we're going to include based on what we're all agreeing to in the development agreement. So basically the backbone roadways and utilities, the mass grading of the site. So that rather than one developer grading and then another developer grading, the idea would be to mass grade the whole site, put in the retention, the drainage channels, and just mass grade the whole thing so we can do it once, which allows us to balance the site and reduce some of those costs. And then the other part of it was because of the drainage channel. Basically, when we started getting into the final grading and kind of the engineering work and doing all the, the flood modeling that we have to do to prove to FEMA that it's going to work and prove to the city that it's going to work, the drainage basin actually doubled in size. And so obviously, it's a very expensive project. And to make all this work, we don't want to lose units. And so we're asking, part of the, the amendment is asking, you know, we're not asking for additional units. We're just asking for the units that the drainage basin takes up, which is about one hundred and ninety units, that we can put those in an area that's not currently mapped and gain those units back because those units are going to help pay for that infrastructure and part of, is part of the SAD, which helps. You know, the more units, it's cheaper cost for everybody. And then because of all this work that we've done and the costs and, and working with home builders to try to make this work, we've lost, you know, almost four years now going through this process. We're getting closer. We have agreements between both property owners and it's now, we're just kind of in the last phases of getting the CLOMAR done, setting up the special assessment district, which will take time. It's, it's not something that happens overnight. We have to follow city policies. There's incredible amount of money that both developers have to put up to create that. There's a lot of attorneys involved, our attorney team, city's attorney team, to do the SAD. And so that's why we're asking for the extension on the tentative map approvals is really not to lose what we've been working at for the last, you know, six-plus years. And so that will give us the ability to spend the next couple of years finishing that up and then still have our tentative maps active when we come out of that. And obviously, we want the tentative maps to have some time after that because they're going to most likely build this in phases. It's not going to happen, the whole thing is not going to happen overnight. So that's kind of just to that. And so when we talk about the park, so the original park was in kind of that, that southeast corner. It was five acres. And so what we found was that with the retention basin now being almost ten acres, and you see this in a lot of communities. So there's obviously, the retention basin is meant to handle like a hundred-year flood. And so most of the time is dry. So rather than just having a ten-acre basin of, you know, rock-lined or whatever it is, we thought, hey, we could actually double the size of the po- park potentially. We know that the city's lacking some flat fields, so let's put some flat fields in there. If it does flood and we do hit the hundred-year, they can get wet. And then it makes a nice community amenity. I mean, you see it all over. There's some in Reno, there's some in Vegas. It's, it's a totally common thing. So, and then the benefit is, is that we get, you know, we're going to get, part of the, the amendment is to gain those units back, but then we're going to enlarge the park and put the park where the drainage basin is. And it makes a nice community amenity, makes the area look nicer and provides a huge benefit, I think, for the whole city. So that's where that amendment piece comes from. So yes, to answer your question, it would be, the retention basin would be recessed. And so we would have like ADA ramps and things to get down there. I mean, so when you're, if your kids are playing at the field, it just, to you, it looks like you just walk down into a big filled area. You're not going to realize that you're in a retention basin. If it were, so all the like bathrooms, any structural stuff has to be out of that flood area. So that would be up kind of just south of that. We'd keep all those things elevated out of there, all the parking. And so that way, if it did get wet, it's just the grass area that's flooding, which not, not a big deal. But like I said, all other elements of the, the development agreement, the tentative map conditions, all the traffic. We had a huge traffic report that accommodated all, both projects. All that stuff remains. So all the Main Street, the Miller Lane, Stock Lane, the Truckee intersection improvements, all the widening, turn lanes, all that stuff remains the same. None of that's going to get changed and actually will be more viable now with this amendment with the, is we're including as the part of the framework in the special assessment district. Which basically, just to kind of wrap up, I mean, that's really what this is, the amendment's about, is finding a funding mechanism for the backbone roadways. And again, I know there's a lot of good questions about the SAD. We're not here tonight to ask for approval of the SAD. There's a lot of questions that are going to have to get answered by both attorney's teams. And I don't have those for you tonight, but this is just the framework. That's all we're talking about tonight. It's really so that both developers and the city can say, these are the things that would go in there. And then that's going to give them the ability to spend the money to, to actually develop the special assessment district and answer the questions. We want to recapture those lost units. It's a benefit for everyone. We don't want to lose that revenue. We want them to help pay for the special assessments. And so we basically just want to make sure we can capture those units that were lost in the, in the drainage basin. Extending the tentative maps will help us kind of further refine the backbone improvements and set up that special assessment district. And then obviously, we talked about the community park benefit. And again, all other elements, everything's going to stay the same as it was when we first did the, the tentative maps several years ago. So with that, I hope I answered all your questions, but happy to answer additional.
I'm just kind of wondering how people are made aware that they're in a special assessment district.
Derek Kirkland, Wood Rogers. So obviously, they'll be, that'll all be put in there. And I, I don't know if maybe the city's attorney, I don't know if you've seen that before and have any experience with that.
Aaron Mortson, City Attorney. I just did some brief research on it and it does look like it needs to be disclosed on the seller's real property disclosure form. And so that would indicate to me that has a section that requires the disclosure of assessments on a property. And so in theory, when the title search is done, the Realtor should inform and prepare the individual to know there's a special assessment on their property.
Yes.
My first home I purchased a long, long time ago had a, an assessment called Melo Ruse on it. And it was through the school district. If you're in a new housing development, it was to help pay for the schools. So it's similar to that. But it is really up to the buyer to really kind of go through their paperwork. The title company gives them a breakdown of all of their property taxes and assessments thereof. And it's in that big, that stack of papers.
Okay.
So.
Right. Thank you. Commissioner Flores?
Yeah, I just, on the prior slide, you have the, 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 the area for the drainage. The, the, it's walled, right? There, there are walls and, and the canal, right?
Derek Kirkland, Wood Rogers. So they're, they're not walls. They're basically like three-to-one slopes. So there will be like a sloped area. And a lot of times we've even, and obviously, we're not at that design level right now, but we've seen it where they'll have, you know, sitting areas in there so people can actually get up above and sit on them. And we, there's ways for us to design it so it becomes, so they become features of the park.
But none of the part is cemented, right?
Nope.
Okay. And so, and that extends all the way to, so it's just recessed of a ditch, you know, made of dirt sides, you know, rock, whatever is there, right? That's it?
Could be mix of rock. I mean, they could, I've seen them where they plant turf on the, that area too. It just, I mean, at the end of the day, we're, it, it just depends. We're just not at that level yet.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Wagner?
This is probably more for Aaron, but typically we do two-year extensions of time or we're asking for a five-year extension of time here. Can you just provide the legalities behind why that is?
Aaron Mortson, City Attorney. In a development agreement, we can do more than two years. The two years is part of the NRS, but obviously, as part of development agreement, we can adjust or modify the rules to how we do it. So a five-year is possible for that development agreement.
Okay. And then with the park, is the plan to construct the park and deed it over to the city? Or would it be a part of the special assessment district to provide long-term maintenance of that park facility?
Uh, this is Derek Kirkland, Wood Rogers. So, I mean, obviously, again, not there at that level of detail yet. But typically with, especially with the sports fields, the idea would be that the special assessment district would be set up so that the park is included in the mass grading and the developers pay for all the, you know, putting in the park. And then we would turn it over to, to the city. Now, if there's a maintenance agreement or something set up later on, that would happen, you know, much later before the park's actually constructed. All that has to be discussed.
Okay. And last question, kind of in the, in the discussion of tonight. I know that we have some larger lots planned. Your slide, I think, said fifteen thousand square foot plus. Do you know kind of a breakdown of either number or percentage of, of lots of that size compared to six thousand square foot lots compared to the, the duets?
Derek Kirkland, Wood Rogers. I don't have that number off the top of my head. Basically, the, the larger fifteen thousand square foot lots are only basically along the perimeter of the west and the, and the south. So it's, it's probably, if I had to guess, it's maybe ten percent.
Okay.
And then the duets are all, they're smaller. I think they're probably like thirty-five hundred to four thousand square foot lots. They're duplexes, so they basically share a garage wall.
I'll, I'll just make the comment, one of the reasons I really like this proposal is just the diverse, like it hits on the diversity, exactly what we're talking about. So I certainly appreciate that, those efforts.
Okay. Any other questions? We had another, oh, yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Holt, I had a couple of questions. I know you said we're not really talking about the special dis- assessment district today, but I just wanted some clarification. If you could define, is it different than like the limited maintenance associations that we see in the communities that are current today that fall under the common interest community? And then the way that Realtors disclose all of that? Or is it similar?
Well, I think Greg Evangelatos, I'm the project manager, but I'm also a professional planner, for the record. And I've been working with Mr. Pardula for seven years on this thing. So I, I think the mechanism, the assessment district allows for the funding of the infrastructure upfront. And we've actually been meeting with three builders, one national builder, one regional builder and one local. And we're probably going to end up with a hybrid of two builders. And the stumbling block is the infrastructure, is the fourteen million in the offsite. So that, that the assessment district handles that. The issue of the long-term maintenance of the park facility, and I, Cody spoke to me about this, is the issue of can the city maintain it or should we form a landscaping maintenance district as kind of an overlay to do that? And again, we're open to that in terms of putting those mechanisms in place.
But either one would fall into like a common interest community as defined and then disclosed as far as real estate goes, which is pretty extensive.
Yes.
I have two more questions and they might go back to Derek, but maybe you can answer. These houses we're talking about FEMA and flood zones, are the owners going to be responsible and required to carry flood insurance based on where they're built?
Derek Kirkland, Wood Rogers. No, that's what, what's really taken us so long is we are going through that CLOMAR process. So basically, the way the CLOMAR works is we're doing all the engineering design to pull this whole, like all the lots out of the flood zone. And basically, the flood zone would be limited to that channel and the basin. But we have to go through our CLOMAR, which we're getting closer. But we have to go through our CLOMAR, which we're getting closer to submitting. And then once the CLOMAR is submitted, FEMA comes back, we get our approval, then we can go do all the mass grading. And then once the lots are built, we submit what's called the, the final map revision. And then that basically pulls all those, those lots out of the flood plain and they, none of them will actually be in the flood plain at that point.
And then my third question falls right in line. What does CLOMAR stand for?
Derek Kirkland Wood Rogers. A conditional letter of map revision.
That's all my questions.
Okay. And did we have a second developer that was going to present?
That's, that was me.
That was you.
I want to make one more point.
Yes, sir.
And this, again, Greg Evangelatos, Red Hawk Ranch. Back to kind of the, the earlier discussion that you had independent of this. In this, in the SFR six designation here, it's limited to 3.6 units per acre because it has common area, open space and diversity. So the lots themselves in this configuration are probably 7,500 to 8,000 square, square feet. But the overall density is less than like 10,000 square foot lots. So you have to, you, you can't just sort of come up with a, a uniform approach to this thing. You've got to look at what planned communities offer in terms of amenities and trade-offs and diversity, which I think we've programmed that in to have four or five different housing types. But also, you know, the various levels that are available in terms of housing in the city. And that, that concludes anything I've got to say.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Any other questions, discussion from the commission? Okay. At this point, can I get a motion? Public comment. So sorry. I always forget that part. Do we have any public comment on this matter? No? Okay. All right. So now can I get a motion? All right. Give me a motion. Let's give me a motion. Okay. Oh, Commissioner Wagner?
Based on the analysis presented in the staff report, the facts of the case and information provided through public comment, which there was none. I move to recommend approval of bill number 368 and DA 20002-AMD1, amending the development agreement for Red Hawk Ranch with the following modifications. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I read the wrong one? I read the modification. I should have read the approval. You have the approvals. Yeah.
Okay. We're changing. Commissioner Garvin?
I withdraw my motion.
I motion to, I recommend to approve this motion based on the analysis presented in the staff report. I move to recommend approval of bill number 368 and DA 20002-AMD1, amending the development agreement for Red Hawk Ranch as proposed.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and we have a second. Can we please vote? Okay. That passes 7 to 0. Okay. At this time, can we take a five-minute recess?
I'm going to disagree.
Okay. Do we have everybody back? Okay. Welcome back. Item 3.2. Discussion on Possible Action Regarding Concurrent Request for Zoning Map Amendment ZMA 25001 and Tentative Subdivision Map, TSM 25001 from Wood Rogers, Inc. On behalf of Jenica Clover Ranch LLC, rezoning six parcels containing approximately 24.72 acres from RR1/2 Rural Residential Half-Acre Minimum and RR5 Rural Residential Five-Acre Minimum to SF6 Single Family 6,000 Square Foot Minimum. And creating 105 Single Family Residential Subdivision generally located between Farm District Road to the south, Langdon Street to the north, Winnie Lane to the west, and Nevada Pacific Boulevard to the east. APNs 021, 331-15-19-20-22-29 and 38. Hold please. Okay. I have a disclosure. Planning Commission NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest. The matter before this body affects a material interest in my commitment to a private capacity as my home is on adjoining property to conclude that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person would be materially affected by this relationship. And I'm going to be abstaining from voting on this matter. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening again, planning commissioners. Elisa Johansson, senior planner for the record. Because we discussed this project last month, I'm going to provide an abbreviated presentation and then pass it off to the developer for additional questions. We've already discussed the location and current zoning. I think we're all fairly familiar with this project by now. Here is a vicinity map and reduced site plan that shows the location in the city and also how the proposed subdivision fits into the development site. Here is a zoning comparison. As you can see on the left-hand side of the slide, we've got a mix of RR5 and RR1/2 zoning that is proposed to be modified and updated to SF6 zoning on the right-hand side of the slide. Here is a zoning comparison. I will leave this up for a beat to allow you to digest the differences between the current zoning designations and the proposed zoning designations. Most notable might be the lot size, but there are also other differences, including setbacks and lot coverage. Here is the preliminary site plan for the tentative subdivision map. Please note that there is a match line in the lower portion of the image on the left. The subdivision does run, generally speaking, from north to south. For the zoning map amendment, we have three findings. The first finding is that the zoning map amendment be consistent with the city's master plan. The SF6 zoning district as depicted in the SNP from our comprehensive plan is consistent with the underlying master plan land use of SFR or single-family residential. The SF6 zoning district also supports several specific comprehensive plan policies particularly pertaining to growth management, housing and resource conservation. One example would be HP 1.1, enhancing Fernley's vitality as a community by providing a variety of housing types, density and costs that accommodate the needs, desires and financial abilities of the current and future households. The proposal also supports policy LU 1.5, promoting infill development. This is surrounded by existing development and meets the definition of infill. The proposal also supports policy LU 1.1, encourage and plan for new development in areas where adequate, adequate, excuse me, public services and facilities can be provided efficiently. Utility infrastructure is available very close to the site. And so providing those services and extending them to the site is more efficient in an infill site than it is in a more remote location. The second finding requires that the zoning map amendment be consistent with the surrounding land uses. The surrounding parcels are also mapped SFR in the comprehensive plan. And to look at this through another lens, the surrounding established residential uses as differentiated from the underlying master plan land use would also be compatible with the residential uses that are allowed in the SF6 zoning district. So by that, we mean that, you know, we're asking for a residential development that would be inherently compatible with the residential developments that already exist. I do want to point out that compatibility is further ensured through adherence to adjacency standards, which were adopted by prior regulatory bodies here in the city. The last finding for the zoning map amendment requires that we hold a public hearing. We did hold a public hearing last month when the item was continued. We are presently holding a public hearing. There will be additional opportunities for public hearings when this project goes to city council. I'm going to breeze through the tentative subdivision map criteria for approval. This part is very, very dry and I apologize. We did determine through our review that the tentative subdivision map does meet all can, all required findings for approval, including dedicating appropriate water resources. That would happen prior to recording a final map. Availability and accessibility of utilities. As I mentioned, water is available nearby and so is sewer. Infill development site, it's within the developed city where police, fire, transportation and recreation services and facilities can be provided efficiently. This meets criterion number four. The tentative subdivision map has been examined for conformance with the proposed zoning district standards, including adjacency requirements. And so we've determined that it is consistent with the proposed zoning district regulations. I'll also highlight that related to criterion seven, the project traffic analysis does not indicate that adverse impacts will result from the proposed development, but several mitigation measures have been imposed through our conditions of approval as recommended by the applicant's traffic engineer. This would include an eastbound left turn lane and a flashing crosswalk at Farm District Road, plus additional improvements, including a sidewalk along Clover Lane. Finally, we determined that there were no physical land characteristics that would cause harm to development or that would pose a hazard to construction or to adjoining properties. There are no major elevation differentials with abutting properties, although as noted at our last meeting, there are irrigation ditches along the east and west property lines. That would be addressed through the development process later as we move forward towards final map. I want to remind you that today we're just asking for tentative approval on the subdivision. There are currently no outstanding comments from review bodies. We did not get many comments. Anything that was not addressed through corrected plans, which the applicant did provide, have been incorporated into the conditions of approval. And I'll also highlight criterion 11. The project has been conditioned for compliance with the applicable regulations, including our code. And so we feel very comfortable recommending approval for this tentative subdivision map. Are there any questions before I turn it over to the developer?
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the planning commission?
You said that the transition adjacency is consistent with the master plan. However, I'm reading that new subdivision lots adjacent to existing subdivision lots shall not, shall match the rear yard setbacks per base zoning, not exceed the number of stories of the existing adjacent homes and shall not exceed a 50% reduction in lot size to the existing subdivision lots. This is clearly way less than 50%.
Allow me to clarify.
Yes.
The adjacency standards are contained in the development code, not the master plan, although the master plan does form the basis for establishing such adjacency standards. The adjacency standards in single-family residential zones in our development code offer a menu of items. And so the applicant has chosen the buffer option. They are not required to provide all of the menu items. They may select one in the list.
And where's the buffer? Yeah, I, I understand. Where's the buffer around this? Cause I can see all the adjacent properties, looking at the, the tentative map in the, in the documents in the packet.
The buffer is located in the rear yard of all perimeter lots. It would be something that would be a no build area that would be established through covenant. And the developer can provide more information on the specific mechanism that they propose.
And one last question, just because obviously there's some ambiguity between the master plan and the building code. Will this be addressed at some point? Will this be addressed at some point?
Could you clarify your question?
That the transitions must not, shall not exceed 50% reduction size in lot sizes, but it also says, as well as the buffer zone, so.
We can certainly look at that section of the development code to determine if any amendments would be appropriate to clarify application.
Or the master, I'm looking at the master plan, not the, not the development code.
Okay.
So.
Can I address that?
Yes, ma'am.
Michelle Rambo, planning director, for the record. What we have to remember is that the master plan is a guiding document. It's not a regulatory document, so it's not law. The development code is. So we have to go with what the development code says over the master plan, which is partly why, and I'll just, on a tangent, when we get to the part about updating the master plan, which we're going to be doing over the next couple of years, we're going to look for consistency between the two. So, but right now, if there's a difference between the master plan and the zoning code or the development code, we have to go with the development code. It's, it's state law.
Okay, any other further questions before we have our presentation? Okay.
Okay, good evening, everybody. My name's Eric Casey. I'm with Wood Rogers, and I'm representing the applicant. Again, I will try not to be too repetitive. I will kind of give you some updates of what happened after the last planning commission and trying to kind of go over some of the, the points that we need to hit on. So I'm going to skip through these real quick. Just to remind everybody of where this is currently located, this is near the new Nevada Pacific Parkway extension. That's going to be coming down to US 50 and connecting with Victory Logistics. You can see the Chaparral Estates located there in green in proximity to that location. I would also like to say too, and reiterate, the number of meetings that we've had with the neighbors as part of this, prior to even submitting the tentative map application and the request for the zone change, we had a neighborhood meeting in April where we invited the, all neighbors within 750 feet of the property to come and look at a conceptual drawing. From that, we have incorporated several of those comments that we heard at the meeting. And those, a lot of those were with traffic. As part of this, we are proposing to have Fort Sutter Boulevard come down and connect into Clover Lane. Part of this is to help address some of the areas' traffic issues, especially along Farm District Road. We did do a traffic report prior to submitting too. That also showed that a majority of the traffic would be accessing, I think it was like 65% of the traffic from this development would be accessing from the north on US 50 as opposed to Farm District Road. And then there was concerns about having, you know, cut-through traffic. So we, we also implied incorporated some of these traffic mitigation measures. So looking at the proposed zone change, this is within conformance of the current master plan as this allows SF6 zoning in this area. And this is in conformance with the development to the north. I would also like to point out that the average lot size that we are proposing is 7,700 square feet. The perimeter lots are 8,000 square feet or larger. And the 6,200 square foot lots are really contained within the development itself. So in, in the interior roads and not along the perimeter. These, these no-build buffers, I have some other slides that I've updated to kind of give you a little bit, a better idea of what those look like. But just to go over them real quick, these are going to be located within the rear and side lots of the actual, each individual lot. The green areas there are indicating a minimum buffer of 30 feet. The yellow ones are doing the side buffer of 20 feet. So code requires a minimum of 20. Those areas that are in green, we are proposing over 30. That blue buffer that's, or purple buffer that's showing there on, on the property at 4521 Langdon Street, that was in response to that actual resident reached out and was concerned that the, at first, we had the Fort Sutter Boulevard coming down right along her property. We did bump that out to allow a 12 to 14-foot buffer in between her property and the back of the sidewalk there to help mitigate that. There was also questions about what the fences would look like at the last meeting. And so this is hopefully providing a little more clarity. And then I have another graphic that will, will help demonstrate this as well. But where the red lines are, so along the eastern and southern perimeter, there will be a six-foot tall solid fence. And then on the western perimeter, there's going to be two fences that are proposed. One is a six-foot tall fence that will be right at the edge of the buffer and then another open view fence along the property boundary. So what this kind of looks like is if we look at a cross-section here, on the top there, you have the western lots. And so we went out, we heard the irrigation concerns from the neighbors that were addressed at the last planning commission meeting. So we went out, we met with Mr. Herrera and walked the property line with him. He did show us his concerns of where the irrigation ditches is located on his property and that occasionally, when they have overwatering, it could spill off onto the other property. And so what we are proposing right now is to put a one-to-two-foot earth berm along the property line there and then put a fence on there as well. And that's to help address the issues that we heard of, the concerns of people coming into their neighbors' yards. There are, there is currently fencing in there, but this additional fence will help to mitigate that. And then you can see there's a 35-foot buffer, which will also include an NV energy easement. And then that will be the solid, six-foot solid fence. That's along the western boundary. I would also like to point out that there is a change in elevation. It's about three feet, two to three feet higher, depending on the, the western boundary of where those houses are going to sit. So if they're, for some reason, it does go over the top of that earth berm, there's still a little bit of elevation separation there. You can also see that with the 35-foot buffer, the house is going to be set back probably like 20 to 30 feet, depending on which lot there is. So there's pretty significant setback along the perimeter lots. Along the eastern boundary, there is an existing four-foot berm there at the top of that on the property line. That will be the six-foot solid fence. And then within that rear yard, there will be a 30-foot no-build buffer. So you could have landscaping. You'll be able to utilize that as your rear, as your backyard, but you will not be able to construct any structures there.
Can I just ask you a quick question? So where is the irrigation ditch?
So on, on the eastern side, it's, it's piped on this, on that, the bottom one. So on the eastern side, it's piped at the bottom of that berm.
The open irrigation ditch.
The open irrigation ditch is on the western side. So you can see it to the very left there, little watermark there. That's the, that's the irrigation ditch. So it's on the other, it's on the adjacent property. And what we're proposing right now is to put that fence on the property line there with a, with a earth berm, so. Yep. Just going over this again, I kind of already touched on this. A majority, this, a traffic study was completed with this, showing that a majority of the traffic will be utilizing the north access and going on to US 50. Traffic calming measures were provided because we did hear that at the first meeting. At first, we had Fort Sutter Boulevard just kind of going straight down through here. We did put a little bump in there, a little chicane to help slow traffic down along the, at the school or the preschool. We did hear concerns about people speeding on there. So we are proposing a three-way stop at the intersection of Fort Sutter and Bristol Cone. Again, this will allow people or pedestrians to, a safe place to cross. And there is another three-way stop proposed at the Fort Sutter and Langdon Street intersection. Also, along Farm District Road, we are required to install a crosswalk, flashing beacons for pedestrians, as well as a left turn lane to go into there. The, the road width, sorry, let me go back. We are proposing a 50-foot right-of-way sidewalk on both sides, curb gutter, and two travel lanes with parking on both sides. However, the conditions currently request that we can, we propose those through Clover Lane off the property. So that, that yellow portion that's highlighted there, so from the south of the project, all the way down to Farm District Road, we, we are conditioned to have curb gutter and then sidewalk on one side. But if you're looking, these, these pictures are actually from Clover Lane. Currently, you can see it's an unpaved road. We do agree that it should be improved and paved and a sidewalk also, or a path provided along there. But we don't feel that curb and gutter is appropriate for this right now. And so we are asking that we amend condition 30 for that small portion on Clover Lane to include, instead of curb and gutter, just the ditches to help put, put that way. And I think this will help to meet the rural character of the area and preserve that. There will be a pedestrian path provided to Farm District Road, to the development as well. So that's what the proposed language is there. And again, it's for just that portion that is highlighted in yellow. So just to, just to reiterate, we did go out and meet with the neighbors prior to. We have, we have made an attempt to also address any of the issues that we, we heard last planning commission meeting. I'd like to point out too, Mr. Griswold was out there when we, he made comments last meeting about his irrigation issues, which are located at the corner of his property and the King property. We did go through there. We identified what he was talking about. We do have a, a proposal that will help to, or will prevent any spillage from coming over the top of that. We're basically going to be reinforcing that box culvert there and constructing something that's not going to allow any of that irrigation water to spill out onto the property. That will be taken care of at final map. The city does recommend approval. It can meet all the findings. Again, this zone change is in conformance with the current master plan. And I am happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, any questions, Commissioner Wagner?
Yeah, I have a few. So the, the Clover Lane section that is south of your subdivision, what does that look like legally? Do you own that road? Is that city-owned? What, what kind of legal authority is there to improve that?
So each, each, there is an easement and an access easement, accessing utility easement in there, but the, it is owned by the, the property owners. But there is an accessing utility easement that goes through there.
So would you need the authority of the property owners to be able to improve that road?
This might be on my wheelhouse, but I believe because it's in the access easement, you'd be able to improve it. But any dedication or of that to the city, though, would probably have to go through the property owners. But I'm not, that might need legal.
Aaron Morrison, City Attorney. I'd have to look at the exact description on the easements, but my suspicion is, is that this access easements, we would have permission to be able to improve and that they, the homeowners could not stop us from, from being able to improve that roadway.
Okay.
But like, I don't have in front of me to look at, so I don't want to 100% commit to that answer.
No, obviously, that's an important part of this project. So eventually, I'd like some, some sort of resolution to that. On the buffering part of this, the 30-foot setbacks, so my understanding is they're going to, that zone is part of the backyard of, of the new subdivision? Is that right?
Yeah, let me go to that slide. So you can see on these, the two to the left there, the property line goes all the way to the edge of the, of the perimeter of the lot. So that buffer will be included in the actual lot itself.
And so really, the only requirement of the, this buffering zone is that no buildings are built within that zone?
Correct. And, and what we originally had proposed was that, you know, the, the property line was stopped there. But then if, in the, in the future, if development comes in, then you're going to have this 30-foot buffer that's a no-man's land, really. And so we proposed to extend the property lines to the edge of that. So we're still meeting code, but allowing those, the property owners to use that in a usable way.
So what happens if a property owner came in and decided to like install a shed within that, that area? Are there repercussions for that property owner? Or what, what would prevent them from doing that?
So this would be, from my understanding, this would be dealt with with a no-build easement. And so if they did install something in there, then they could have to remove it if somebody complained.
Okay.
Because it'll be the fence and then the buffer, right?
Correct.
So their, their yard will be in, okay.
Correct.
Can you go back to that irrigation? One, one more time?
Sorry, wrong one, this one?
All right, kind of one last question. So I think my concern on this is kind of this buffering adjacency standard deal. It just feels like, it's just a part of their yard. It doesn't really buffer from the, the adjacent five-acre, the five-acre parcels. Has there been any thought about, and I, it's kind of, looks like it's, you've, you've built kind of longer skinny lots there where you're almost maximizing the amount of, of property owners butted against those five-acre lots? Any thoughts of expanding those or reconfiguring those so there's not so many property owners butted against the, the larger landowners in that area?
I mean, I think the thought there was that we've seen this proposed in, in other developments, right? And what code requires is a landscape buffer. And so by not having it in the common area, you know, this was our, this was our solution to allowing people to utilize that area.
Commissioner Lewis?
So really, it's really not a buffer. It's just 30 feet of their yard that they're not going to be able to build on. So I don't know why we're calling it a buffer because the homeowner that buys it legally owns that land. Are you guys going to establish HOA on this?
Yes.
So that everyone's informed that they cannot use their 30 feet in their yard?
Yes, this, I mean, the HOA will be established. And this isn't any different from an access easement or something like that.
Yeah, I understand, but we keep saying it's a buffer. It's not. That's all I have to say.
Any other comments from the planning commission? Oh, Julianne?
I know I keep hearing that you're saying that the buffer goes, their fence goes all the way and the buffer is included in the yard that they have. But I'm seeing different on the picture of the red line on the western perimeter saying that's where their fence is. And then there's another fence and the green line. Am I wrong in saying like the eastern perimeter?
So the, the, the property line still extends all the way to the edge of the property.
But it's fenced off to what they can use.
Yes, because of the NV, because there is a power line that goes through there and there's NV energy easement where they'll have to take, be able to drive and access through there.
But that's not the case on the eastern side, right? There's just the buffer within their yard.
Correct.
But on the western side, let's take Lot 17 as an example. What size lot is that theoretically to begin with?
That size lot is about, I mean, I think it's like 8,000 square foot lot. I couldn't tell you specifically on that lot, but.
But then when you take 30 or 35 feet off of that, what size lot are they left with to use that's fenced in?
I, I can't answer that right now. I don't, I don't know specifically for that.
How many houses are affected on the western side with the fencing? being inside of their lot and then the easement being outside of what they're able to landscape or use or enjoy?
Yeah. So that's, it goes all the way up the western lot. And so that, that, those are about 135 feet deep. So the, you know, the other ones on the interior are about 100 feet by 60 feet. So those ones are about, when you're talking about the, if you're just talking about the fenced area, that's the same size lot as the ones in the, in the interior.
But to be clear, we're like boasting the idea that we're having varied lots and some of them being up to eight and 12,000 on the outside, but they're really not. They may even have less than 6,000 with whatever is taken off or.
It's not going to be less than 6,000.
Okay, but it would be similar to, safe to say, or I mean, it's not eight or 12,000, right? Like 30 feet across their whole yard.
That's correct, but it does provide, it does provide that separation between the existing lots on the western and, and it meets the intent of what code is trying to.
Thank you. I have one more question, actually. We talk about a five foot pedestrian path instead of a sidewalk. Is that a difference in size? Like what is the standard sidewalk?
No, so what they're, what they're requiring is a five foot wide sidewalk. And we are proposing the same thing. We're just basically just not proposing the curving gutter. Yeah, same size.
Okay, I missed that. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Vietnam. All right. Looks like it is time for public input.
Hello, Jeff Kling. I live on Winnie's Lane. I spoke last time concerned about flooding and I still have that same concern. Can you put the slide back up, show up the ditch? By chance, is there any way of doing that? In the picture they showed, the, the land to the east is essentially the same level as the bottom of the ditch. Adding a two foot berm does nothing if a rodent burrows through the bottom of the ditch. So either raise the land on the east side to the top of the ditch or pipe it. If they're not willing to do either of those things, I ask you to vote no. Thank you.
Hi, Becky Halit for the record. What I gave you guys earlier is the development code is not the master plan. So I, and I do see on there where it could be one or the other, you know, where they could do the, the setback or the matching of the lot size or the, within a 50% reduction. But the, the house that I purchased here in Fernley had a division like that. It had a fence and then I had another fence because there's a TCID ditch behind my house. I'm still responsible to clean that section of land. So if they're doing this or with the HOA, is the HOA going to come in and clean it? Or the homeowner is going to have to go in there and, and keep it clean? I, we have, you know, weeds, sagebrush, all sorts of things that can catch on fire and have lots of fun in this neighborhood. So I, I am curious whether it's a community area or could, or how that would be taken care of. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes.
See on this map, it's, it's unrealistic.
Wait.
The water, the water level is lower than the property that we're trying to irrigate. So when we irrigate, the water is going to be probably a foot higher than our property. There's a berm on both sides of the ditch. How are you going to get the water that's below your level up on your property? So the water is going to flow higher than that. So you follow what I mean? So adding, adding more, a higher berm to it doesn't do anything if it's still higher than the, than the property to the east when water is flowing through it. So thank you.
Okay. Any other public input on this matter? Any other discussion from the planning commission?
I have one other comment.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Wagner?
I, I am reading through this buffering zone and I'm still having trouble, and I, I know the slide on the eastern side, understanding how a fenced property meets the buffer requirements. It says, "The buffer zone may be common open space for the proposed subdivision and shall include at least one of the following improvements: paths, trails, drainage ways, landscaping, berms, or other subdivision amenities. The city may require a larger landscape buffer or of a specific width or other visual and/or sound barrier, open view fence, wall landscaping." I just don't read that as someone's fenced yard. I don't, maybe I'm interpreting this completely wrong, but it seems like it's kind of open space if we're talking about paths, trails, drainage ways, things like that. So I, I think that's really the part of this proposal that I'm caught on is, is the buffering on both sides and the lack of transitioning into some of these larger lots.
Did you guys want to comment on that?
Eric Casey for the record. So we have the landscaping is, is the thing that we're providing in there. And really somebody has to own, own this, right? Whether that's an HOA or a private property owner. By proposing this, we thought it would be a better use for people to be able to have a larger backyard than opposed to having an unmaintained weed patch, right? Like, so that was our thinking with this. We are still providing the buffer. Somebody has to own it. It's, it could be common area or it could be for the private property owners. In this case, we proposed to have the private property owners.
So I think the counter argument in my mind here is that for those five acre plus property owners who are bordering on this, it's kind of defeating the purpose of this buffer, right? The purpose of the buffer is so that you don't have four lots right on, onto your property line in the back. And if we're, we're extending those backyards all the way to that point, I just, I, I don't know that it's in the spirit of what we're trying to do here with the adjacency. The other comment I'd have is that the HOA, I mean, in my mind, you, you have obviously some common space that's going to have to be maintained on the, the western side. It's probably that however you're going to maintain the western side, the eastern side should be maintained the same way. And it's probably an HOA type of deal.
Derek Kirkland with Rogers. And I don't know if we could put it back up the slide real quick. I'll try to kind of clarify a couple of things for you, Cody, to try to answer that question for you. On the the west side. So there's a couple of different things going here. So the west side, you truly do have the 30 foot easement because we're going to have double fences. And when we walked out there with RC, you know, we elevated that. So to answer the gentleman's question is we elevated the other property. And so we're going to continue to work with the city and ultimately the city is going to approve whatever design we do and take into consideration the engineering of that, that drainage ditch. And so what we did was, you know, create the berm and elevate to create in an area. For some reason that drainage ditch starts to overflow or over top. It's got plenty of area to go without flooding the houses. And then the other thing is, is we've got, we're going to put an open view fence because there was questions about the cattle and those types of things. We're going to put an open view fence on that in addition to the existing property owner's fence. And then the open view fence will allow the property owners on the west to be able to see into that area. Cause what you don't want is two six foot solid fences in this 30 foot gap that nobody can see what anyone's doing back there. So, and then the properties would have a six, a six foot fence on, on the new proposed lot side. So you do truly have that buffer area there on the west side. On the east side, when you look at, and you can kind of see it, so on the far east, that property kind of goes up right now. And so there's actually a, probably a five or six foot berm that runs along the whole property. So that the properties that are there now would still sit lower on the other side. So there's already a berm. So if we left a 30 foot gap, nobody would ever see what's going on in that 30 foot gap. And so we worked with the city to figure out, okay, we still want to make sure there's a buffer area there, which obviously pushes those houses back further. But at the end of the day, we just want to make sure that, that with that extra 30 feet that there's, it's just, it doesn't become a no man's land that traps trash, entices people to do stuff they're not supposed to be doing back there. And so that was where that no build buffer came from. And I think it's been used. I don't know if at some point in time that'll change in code, but as of right now, that's kind of the solution that we've worked on, on a couple of different developments to kind of address that 30 feet, but make sure that somebody, somebody has the ability to maintain and, and, and take care of that area. But there's, you know, we could theoretically move that 30 foot buffer in and just leave it like it is. I mean, I don't know that there would be any heartburn over that, but then it's just 30 feet of trash collection that becomes a problem.
So, but you're saying 30 feet of trash collection, but isn't that what it's going to be anyway?
No, cause right.
It's on the outside of those people's yard.
So on the east side, it'll be part of their yard. So they can't build sheds and they can't build structures in it, but they'll be maintained. They theoretically will be maintaining that area. And then on the NV energy side, NV energy has to maintain their access route through there. So they maintain it and then we, we will probably set it up. So the HOA also has a responsibility to keep that access open and maintain it.
So NV energy has to maintain their portion, but what about the other 30 foot no build buffer that you're talking about?
So it's, it's all kind of in that same, same area. So, and that's why I said the, and then we'd make sure that the HOA has the responsibility also in addition to NV energy to basically maintain that access and, and maintain that area, but we'll also have open view fencing on the existing property line so that the existing homeowners can see into that area as well as they do today.
So just, I think this makes sense. The western side totally makes sense to me. If I was a property owner on the eastern side, I would say, why aren't we doing the same thing with these eastern lots that we did with the western lots? Cause to me that's kind of the, the gist of what I'm reading here in these buffering standards is we're meeting what I think a buffer looks like on the west, not so much on the east. I would defer to the property owners over there though. If, if they would rather have it this way, I, I mean, it's not really for me. But if you're paying an HOA to maintain the west, it wouldn't be that much of a stretch to say, hey, we're going to have this buffer area in the east that the HOA is maintaining too.
Okay. Any other comment from the commission? Do you have some public input ma'am? Okay, let's do it.
Good evening. My name's Roberta Griswold. My husband talked earlier, but we live off of Brown Lane, which would be, I think that 30 foot buffer, the eastern one that they weren't sure, or you know, that's supposed to be part of the yard would back up to our place. The only thing is, is when we moved to Fernley, we chose to come here for the rural, you know, accepting atmosphere, being able to have animals and, you know, grow plants and, you know, not have to listen to our neighbors argue, which, you know, when you're putting the houses so close together, you know, we even with the best of intentions, it, you know, it is just a little too much. Now across from us, they have the subdivision that they're building and, you know, they've got like quarter acre lots. Of course, you know, we had to suck it up and, you know, deal with that. But that actually isn't looking too bad, you know, having those larger lots. It's just having those hu, you know, those tiny lots right behind us is just, you know, defeating everything that we moved here to Fernley wanting and hoping to achieve. Cause when we first moved here, originally that area where the middle school is and all that, we were told that's going to be green space. It's going to stay green, no problem. Well, it didn't last long and that was changed. So, you know, just having those small lots behind us is just not very aesthetically pleasing and I think not very good for the community itself.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public input on this matter? Okay. If there is none.
I just had one last, I guess, question. Now this is a recommendation to council, right? We're not making a final decision tonight. It would be up to city council.
That's correct. You're just recommending and they will make the final decision.
I mean, I'm, I'm close on this project. I just see some issues here that I'm not totally comfortable with on the proposal tonight.
Okay. All right. With that, can we get a motion on this item? Did you have a question? Okay.
All right. Considering the information contained in the applicant's supplemental package and based on the analysis presented by the staff report, I move to recommend the approval of bill 365 ZMA 25001 rezoning the subject parcels from RR 1 half and RR 5 to SF 6 and recommend the approval of TSM 25001 subdividing 24.72 acres into 105 single family residential lots.
Okay. I have a motion. Can I get a second?
No second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Can we please vote? Okay, that failed two to three. Was that what it was? You took it away so fast. Okay. Thank you. All right. Next item. 3.4 Discussion on Possible Action Regarding a Comprehensive Master Amendment Request MPA 25003 from the city of Fernley to adjust the comprehensive master plan. Comprehensive master plan use designation. Whoops. So sorry. Okay. 3.3 Discussion on Possible Action Regarding Bill 3 point, or I'm sorry, number 367 associated with a zoning map amendment request ZMA 25002 from the city of Fernley rezoning one parcel containing approximately 23.19 acres generally located at 2305 Farm District Road from SF 20, single family 20,000 square foot minimum to OSP, open space and parks to bring the site into conformance with the comprehensive master plan use designation of open space and parks OSP APN Yes ma'am.
Good evening again, planning commissioners. I promise you're almost done with me. Alisa Johansson, senior planner for the record. Here tonight with a third proposal. This is a city led action for a zoning map amendment at 2305 Farm District Road. We already discussed the size and location of the property. I want to reiterate that the site's current zoning designation is SF 20, single family with a 20,000 square foot minimum. The surrounding zoning pattern, again, for this property is quite complicated. There are a range of zoning districts surrounding this site. Most of them are single family residential, although there are some rural residential zoning designations mapped in the vicinity as well. mapped in the vicinity as well. Here is a visual depiction of the zoning pattern in the immediate vicinity. The irregular dogleg shaped property in the middle, that's a little bit bluer in tint, is the subject property. Here is a zoning comparison showing the existing dimensional standards for the SF20 zone. The Open Space and Parks zoning designation does not have dimensional standards. They have not been established for that district. Developments in this zone are therefore considered on a case by case basis. The zoning map amendment, as we discussed earlier, has three findings for approval. The first being that the proposal is consistent with the city's master plan and otherwise consistent with state and federal law. The Open Space and Parks zoning district is consistent with the underlying master plan land use of open space and parks. So we've got a one-to-one consistency there. The OSP zoning district supports several comprehensive plan policies. It allows us to retain or enhance the aesthetic value of Fernley's natural and built environment. So rather than a single family zoning district that would allow residential development, this will now be an open space and park zoning designation, which as you can see in the uses, um, from the comprehensive plan above, allows a completely different range of uses. This zoning map amendment would also ensure that future growth is sensitive to the existing agricultural and farming uses. So again, retaining that property for other uses beyond residential development. The second finding requires that the zoning map amendment be consistent with the surrounding land uses. In this case, we do look at it through two lenses. The first lens being consistency with the mapped comprehensive plan land use. In this case, the surrounding parcels are not mapped OSP in the comprehensive plan. So there is a, uh, conceptual inconsistency there. However, the OSP zone and the allowable uses in that zone are considered compatible with all other zones and their allowable uses. And that's in both the comprehensive plan and the development code. So by its very nature, the OSP zone is compatible with all other zones that we offer in the city. The final finding requires that we provide public notice and that a public hearing be held. We did publish legal ad in the Reno Gazette Journal on August 27th. We also mailed notice to property owners in the vicinity on August 27th, and we are currently holding a public hearing. We do recommend approval of this proposal and, um, of course, would also accept a denial. We do ask that if you are denying the proposal, that you state your finding and your supporting analysis that will, uh, help us as we move forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I just had a question about the open designation of what, what would you allow there? I know the parks is scheduled to be there, but would you allow like, uh, I don't know, uh, a nonprofit, uh, structure there that, that does, I don't know, a club of some sort? Is, is it has to be no structures at all there in the property? Is, am I correct about that?
No, not necessarily. So this is different from an open space designation that would require no development of the property at all. I apologize. I did not include a snip from the development code that lists the allowable uses in this zone. But you can see from the comprehensive plan snip that the primary uses would be neighborhood, community and regional parks, golf courses and other recreational areas that serve the entire community. Broadly speaking, that could potentially allow recreation facilities that could include structures.
Okay. That's what I need to know. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope. And this is a, we need public input, correct?
Correct. But there is no, this is a city-led action, so there will be no other presentations, but public comment is welcome.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this matter? Yes, sir.
More or less, uh, uh, would be a big improvement for our subdivision, a park down that way. And, uh, also there's, uh, designated park area across farm district. So it'd be a, in the future, a big facility for us. So I'm in support of it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public input? Okay. Can I get a motion? Commissioner Garbin.
Based on the analysis presented in the staff report, I move to recommend approval of bill number 367 and ZMA 25002, rezoning the subject parcel from SF20 to OSP.
Okay. I have a motion. Can I get a second? Commissioner Lewis?
Oh, second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. May we please vote?
Okay. That passes seven to zero. Okay. Now 3.4. Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Comprehensive Master Plan Amendment Request, MPA 25003 from the City of Fernley to Adjust the Comprehensive Master Plan Land Use Designation for an approximately 2.29 acre parcel located at 60 Sage Street from low density residential LDR to commercial C for consistency with the existing zoning designation of C2, general commercial and for consistency with the master plan amendment for this site APN 020-272-01.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Alisa Johansson, senior planner for the record. The property, as we've discussed, is 2.29 acres in size. It's located at 60 Sage Street. There is a, an aerial map snip on your screen. The surrounding zoning pattern in this case is relatively simple. We have rural residential, one acre minimum across the canal to the north. SF12 across Sage Street to the south. Industrial across highway 95A to the east and rural residential, one acre minimum to the west. You'll see a visual depiction of this on the left-hand side of your screen. So again, industrial to the east, RR1 to the west and north and SF12 to the south. On the right-hand side of your screen, you will see the underlying master plan land use. This property is part of the southwest area of Fernley. And so we recently remapped the land uses in this area as part of the southwest area plan. This unintentionally created an inconsistency with the site's current zoning, which you can see on the left-hand side of general commercial or C2. We're seeking to correct that with this action. The Comprehensive Master Plan Amendment has three findings. The first finding be that the master plan amendment would implement goals listed in the City of Fernley master plan as listed in the staff report. There are several comprehensive plan policies and goals that would be implemented by this action, encouraging and planning for new development in areas where adequate, adequate public services and facilities can be provided efficiently. I do want to provide a little bit more detail about these as I move through them, so bear with me. The, uh, new development would be along highway 95. So there are already adequate public facilities and services in the vicinity, although it is more on the perimeter of, uh, Fernley. It is still within an area where existing utility infrastructure is already present and can be easily extended to the site. This is also supported by LU 1.5.3. Development on the perimeter of Fernley is appropriate only where orderly extension of existing public services and facilities can occur. One of the land use policies that is particularly promoted by this action would be to create a growth pattern that assures flexible, feasible and efficient projects. So where the existing, um, underlying master plan land use of commercial has been replaced by low density residential and where the existing zoning designation of C2 are somewhat incompatible with this goal. We feel that, uh, a corner site such as this located next to a heavily trafficked roadway would not be suitable for residential development, which may leave it undeveloped for, for many years to come. We feel that by re-implementing that commercial land use, we facilitate, uh, flexibility and feasibility. Again, because of the likelihood of commercial development coming on to that corner site. LU 1.4, uh, asks that we ensure existing and future land uses be compatible. Again, we are seeking to rectify an inconsistency that was unintentionally created through the southwest area plan mapping process. I'll also point out, as I mentioned in the staff report, that the property owners pursued a master plan amendment for this property several years ago. And so we are just seeking to revert to the master plan land use that had previously been adopted by the city. The second finding requires that we determine the master plan to be compatible with surrounding land uses. This is, is really the key to this proposal in that the proposed amendment continues the non-residential edge that was envisioned in the southwest area plan. As you can see in the snip on the left-hand side of the screen, we've got commercial land uses marching south along 95A with some mixed uses further south. I didn't have enough room to include the entire stretch of roadway that abuts the southwest area, but there are also industrial uses further to the south. And there are also industrial uses, um, across the highway to the east. So again, uh, promoting that non-residential core that encapsulates the transportation corridor. We feel that corner sites are key gateways to residential neighborhoods and it's an area where, uh, small scale businesses can easily be located, both in terms of the aforementioned utility infrastructure that's readily available in the street, easy access from transportation corridors, and then also providing a buffer to the residential uses that are behind. So providing that gateway and transition. Based on this information, we feel that, uh, commercial land use at this particular site would be perfectly appropriate and compatible with both existing and future land uses. The final finding requires again, that we give public notice and that a public hearing be held. Uh, this particular action does not require mailed notice, but we did publish legal ad in the Reno Gazette Journal on August 27th, and we are currently holding a public hearing. Based on all of this information, we do recommend approval. Should you choose to deny, we would again, ask that you state your finding and your supporting analysis. Again, this will help us move forward. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Lewis?
I have a question for you. So I'm assuming that the landowners is aware of the change or is he, this company Tranquil Land LLC? Are they the ones that came to the city and asked it to be re-zoned to commercial?
So the property is already zoned commercial. They did pursue a zoning map, or excuse me, a master plan amendment. Let me check my notes.
Cause I have it listed under
Back in 2008. So they did pursue a master plan amendment back in 2008. And then with the southwest area plan, we inadvertently, uh, did not retain that commercial underlying master plan land use. They did approach us to ask questions about that. The zoning designation is really what we would follow in terms of allowable uses. However, we did offer to, uh, correct the inconsistency. And in discussions amongst ourselves in the planning department, we felt that this was, uh, minor oversight in the southwest area planning process and that the non-residential edge that I discussed earlier would be more appropriate. And so I wouldn't say that this is an applet, that this is a property owner-led action. This is a city-led action. However, they did, they are aware that we are, are proposing this action and are in concurrence.
Okay. Very good. That's
Okay. Commissioner Wagner?
So I, I'm all good with the change. My question is more, it seems like that specific area is very prone to potential flooding, drainage issues with all the water running. I, I mean, we constantly drive by Sage and see the flooding around Sage. I think some improvements have been done to this particular area, but do you have any updates about if there's drainage or flooding concerns?
There are flooding concerns on this property and I'm gaining that information from the prior master plan amendment from 2008. So the information is somewhat outdated. However, as I understand the history of this site, there have not been any further development actions undertaken on this particular property. However, in the master plan amendment from 2008, there were significant concerns related to city staff regarding drainage. TCID and BOR had concerns that, um, you know, any buildings placed on this property would need to very, very carefully consider drainage and access. And so we expect that to be considered as part of any future development plans. But, uh, having, uh, uh, having all of those issues fully resolved is not necessary for this mapping effort, land use mapping effort.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes ma'am.
I just had one and it's with ingress and egress. Is that coming off of the 95A or do they have to come in off of Sage or has that been decided?
That has not been decided yet because there is no development proposal at this time. However, back in 2008, it was indicated to the property owner at the time that access directly from 95 would likely not be supported by S dot. Excuse me, N dot.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. And this is a public hearing?
It is.
All right. Do we have any public input on this matter? Okay. Be it none? Any other discussion from the planning commission? Oh, oh, timeout. Do we have someone on Zoom? Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yes. So for the record, Clayton Trapp with Land Stewart Consulting. I've represented the, uh, the, the landowner in this. And I, I think Lisa just gave a fantastic and the reason why we're, we're asking for this and Lisa and your legal team has, has helped in this process. And we are extremely grateful for that. We, um, uh, actually want to move forward with some other options regarding that. But of course they are commercial and your development code is still very much in play for us. And we really do appreciate the fact that the city has been, uh, so gracious and working and trying to get this, as Lisa stated inadvertent, um, designation, um, back to what was paid for by the landowner back in 2008. So thank you. We really appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Is that it? Okay. Any other discussion from planning commission or staff? Okay. Can I get a motion? Commissioner Wagner?
See if I can get this one right. Based on the analysis presented in the staff report, I move to approve bill number 366 and MPA 25003 and recommend that the city council certify said approval adjusting the Comprehensive Master Plan Land Use Designation for parcel 020-272-01 containing approximately 2.29 acres and located at 60 Sage Street from low density residential to commercial.
Okay. That have a motion. Can I get a second?
Oh, second.
Okay. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Can we please vote? Oh, I did. Huh?
Oh, seven, zero.
Oh, okay. Just, okay. All right. It's been a long meeting. Okay. That passed seven to zero. Okay. Item number four. Chair and commission items. Do we have any chair or commission items? Okay. Be it none. Planning director items.
I do have some updates for you on previous meetings and then a couple of other miscellaneous items. Um, at the August 20th city council meeting, the code amendment dealing with the master plan amendment process, um, was formally approved. So that one is, uh, going to be in place here as soon as we can get it. On the September 3rd city council meeting, uh, uh, they approved contracts, uh, for the capital improvement plan, impact fee study and the infrastructure plan for the north and, and the southwest areas. So those will be kicking off here in the next few weeks. And, uh, we will be having, um, opportunity to include the planning commission, um, as we go through that process. Um, we, and I'll, sorry, on September third, also we had, um, first readings for those two code amendments we heard last time, which was the home occupation and the trash enclosures. So those will be going for, uh, formal adoption, uh, next week. And then we have, um, the south area plan. Uh, the RFP time, uh, the deadline, sorry, I can't think. It's been a long meeting. Um, the RFP deadline has passed. We had one, one proposal that we received. So that contract will be going to the, um, city council next week as well. And then, um, in other news, we have, um, a new associate planner, um, which is Mr. Tristan Rodriguez. He is here. Um, he comes from, uh, Reno. He's doing an excellent job. What, two, three weeks, two weeks? Oh, well, it's longer than I thought it was. Um, but yeah, he's doing a great job. Um, and we're happy to have him. He will be doing a lot of the pro- uh, project management for those big infrastructure plans. So, and that's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
Okay, any questions? Okay, um, do we have any requests for future agenda items? Okay, this is the portion of the meeting devoted to the public. If you wish to comment, you can do so in person at the meeting or use the raise your hand feature in Zoom. Star nine if you're participating via phone. Public comments are limited to three minutes. Please avoid repetition. Is there any public input? Be it none? The next meeting will be October eighth at five PM. We are-